Okay, it is 5:30 and I see seven council members, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call this committee the whole, the Lansing City Council, to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
President participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley.
President participating remotely from Pensacola, Florida.
Councilmember Garza.
President participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar. I don't see her in here yet, we'll just keep watching. Councilmember Jackson.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Betts.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
And Councilmember Wood.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
There are seven members present.
You're good, thank you. Quorum is present. Next up is our minutes from April 26, 2021. Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the, let's see, all seven pages of the meeting minutes from April 26, 2021 is presented.
Very good, the motion has been presented. Is there any discussion or clarification on the minutes? Seeing none, quickly call a roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmembers Spatafor.
Yes.
And I do not see Councilmember Dunbar yet, so motion carries 7-0.
All right, motion carries. Next up, special presentations. Tonight, we are supposed to have with us our chief strategy officer, but she was unable to attend. We have confirmed that she will be here on May 10th to present the same information. So that, we'll look forward to that. And maybe, that means this meeting will be a little briefer than normal. Let me just double check. I had asked that maybe Mr. Whitaker can be around and Mr. Brower be around, just in case there were budget questions that popped up. But I, without the CSO's presentation this evening, I don't know that we got anything to prompt it. So I really appreciate Mr. Brewer's continual work with the Finance Director and the Budget Director. I'm getting responses to our inquiries. And I know you all have been working behind the scenes with him as well for committee priorities and things like that. Just a reminder, your committee priorities, please get them to us sooner than later, so we can look at them alongside the 17th. Or if you'd like to look at them on the 10th, we can do that as well. But for sure, they need to be to us by the 17th, or else, no go. So, any questions before we move on? Pat, was that a question, or?
Yeah, it's like my hands up, because I couldn't find my raised hand thing. So, so I just want to be clear on the budget priorities. That does not prevent us or preclude us from making amendments or other stuff like that at the final budget approval.
It does not, no, but we're asking that if you could about budget policies on the 10th. That's when we're scheduled to sort of talk about them. But obviously, it's your prerogative as council member to amend them on the floor.
Thank you.
At this point, can I get Councilmember Dunbar?
Oh, yes.
To let me know when she's participating from.
Thank you. Yep, Dunbar present, participating from South Lansing.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes that item. So we are going to move on to the CDBG budget adoption. We did have a presentation on that.
Mr. Chair, aren't we supposed to have public comment at this point?
I guess if you want to follow the law, we should do that. So let's go back. For those wishing to provide public comment in the, in the meeting, you can do so by raising your hand. It is Alt-Y on a Mac, Option-Y on a PC, star nine on your phone, or some other button combination on a PC or device I'm not familiar with. Go ahead and raise your hand. You will have three minutes to present, to speak rather, and we will close discussion after the first person has spoken. Or a reasonable time after that, if it's not quite three minutes. And for those of you who are actually part of the presentation on ranked choice voting, so Hugh and Jim Delain, you do not have to speak a public comment, we will have time during the presentation for you to speak during that. So the first person to speak is Loretta Stanaway. Loretta, please go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Did I get unmuted?
You did.
Okay. I am not in favor of the ranked choice voting, and there are a few reasons for that. One is, maybe it's just my old-fashioned upbringing and reluctance to change, but I've always thought it was one person, one vote, and that's what I am comfortable with. Also, I think that there's a lot of opportunity for people to get confused with the ranked choice voting system. And it does eliminate the runoff elections, which I understand is a cost-saving. But we have to not necessarily run our elections based on cost savings, but based on fairness. And I think that the ranked choice system denies the voters a second chance to evaluate the top contenders after a primary has been held. So, there you have it. I'm not in favor, sorry, guys.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to give it just one more minute for folks to raise their hand. So, just sit here awkwardly for 60 seconds. 39 seconds. Think it might be fair to say that we can move on. All right, we're going to move on and to our next item on the agenda, which is the resolution adopting the CDBG budget. Mr. Vice President, would you like to make the motion to open discussion?
So moved.
All right, we have before us a motion to approve the CDB budget and annual action plan. Let me just double check here, I'm looking at the, okay. We actually only have one resolution here, I'm looking at the online version, it's a little confusing. So, okay, the resolution here is to approve the CDB budget action plan. Any further discussion on this? Okay. Seeing none? Sherry, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
And Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0, and it is on the council agenda for passage tonight.
Okay. Next item is the resolution, ballot language charter amendment, Article 2, Chapter 2, 201, 24, 205, and the installment of ranked choice voting to the city charter. This was discharged from the Committee on Operations. I think I can leave, I'll let Councilmember Dunbar explain the discharge, but first we need a motion to get in front of us.
So moved.
Okay, the motion is before us. Councilmember Garza, would you like to go before Councilmember Dunbar sets the stage?
Yeah, I just wanted to do a point of clarification. Does City TV, some couple of people just emailed me, say they can't watch this on City TV right now. It's some scholarship award right now. Is this not aired on City TV?
Typically is. Dominic?
It is supposed to be, I'll get in touch with Faith and we'll work on it.
I may say that I'm actually watching it right now on our cable channel here in the lobby.
They may be trying, they may be looking at old feed or something like that, Jeremy, if they're watching it on, on the internet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry, thank you, Jeremy, thank you, Dominic. Councilmember Dunbar, would you like to explain what's before us in the discharge?
Yes, we felt that it was important to have a presentation in Committee of the Whole to discuss this among everyone, so that we were all on the same page before voting on this on the floor. And I think that the presentation that's about to be given by Jim Delain and Hugh would probably cover everything, so I will defer to them.
Okay. Before we defer to them, I see two hands up, one from Councilmember Garza, and then one from Councilmember Betts.
Sorry, it was residual.
Okay, oh, thank you. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I guess one question that I have before the presentation begins, and hopefully this is addressed, is it looks like this is written so that at-large members won't be participating in ranked choice voting. If you can address if that was the intent of this or not, that'd be great, thank you.
Sure, well, why don't we get the presentation started? And I'm going to read the language to again and see if I read it the same way, and then we can have the drafter weigh in on that. Jim, Delain, welcome back to Cal.
All right, thank you very much. I am going to share my screen with you. The narrator of our presentation is Hugh McNichol. So if Hugh, are you unmuted and ready to go?
Can you hear me?
Yes, all right, thank you so much.
Okay. I'm ready to see the presentation.
Is, can you all see the ranked choice voting slide?
No. And you should have permission to share.
Now?
Yes.
Yes.
See it.
All right, thank you so much to council for the indulgence, listening to us several times. Maybe our presentation tonight is actually more for the public than for you, because a lot of what you're going to hear, you already know. And I think you're also going to hear an answer to Councilmember Betts's question. So I'm going to turn it over to Hugh McNichol.
Hi, everybody, I am honored to present to everybody.
Can you send next slide in?
Hugh, we're having a little trouble here. Is anyone else having trouble, or is it just me? Okay, yeah, we're here in a little trouble, Hugh, you're going in and out.
Can I dial in?
Yes, you can, we can wait just a moment.
Okay. Okay, I just joined, I'm 8452.
I can hear you clearly, Hugh.
Okay.
You should be able to unmute your phone, but let's make sure you mute your computer.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yeah, okay.
Go ahead and turn the volume off on your computer as well.
Okay, done.
There we go.
I'm ready. So I am humbled to be able to tell everybody about ranked choice voting, what it is and how it will affect Lansing. Next slide, Jim. All right. This is a sample ballot and educational form put out by the League of Women Voters in Maine. It explains what ranked choice voting is and how it works to the voter. So instead of just voting for one person, it allows voters to vote for their first choice and their second choice and their third choice. It gives them backups in case their favorite can't win, and in case no candidate reaches over majority. So to address Loretta's point upfront, she talks about just getting rid of the runoff. This does the exact opposite, actually, it adds runoffs. It gives us as many runoffs as we need to get a winner with over 50%. And the election that it gets rid of is the low turnout August election that has sometimes less than 10% of the vote, and replaces it with a high turnout election in November with more candidates to choose from. So this explainer, just, that was the, that's what the ballot looked like. And then after everybody submits their ballots, this is how the votes are counted. Go ahead and play that, Jim. I can't hear, Jim. Jim, the volume isn't working?
That would be up to Dominic, I can't adjust that.
You actually have to.
I definitely cannot adjust that for you, sorry.
Yeah, that's got to come from your computer, Jim, you got to turn the YouTube video volume up. Also, Mombi, I'm coming for your job, apparently. So Jim, there's a volume thing.
See if you can fix your sound settings. I can hear that. I can hear that now.
So when you click Share the Screen, Jim, you have to also click Share Screen, Share Computer Audio.
You don't have to rank them all, you can rank as many or as few as you like. Now it's kind of everybody's.
So, stop sharing your screen.
Under ranked choice voting rules.
Now go ahead and try to share it again, but before you click Share, so click Share at the bottom, and then the screen you want to share on, but make sure the box is checked that says Share Screen Audio. Or Share Computer Audio, excuse me.
Pick your favorite color, the ranked choice voting way. Instead of voting for just one color, you get to rank them. Well, I like blue the best, but if I can't have blue, I want pink. And if neither of those can win, orange is my least favorite, so I'll rank green next. You don't have to rank them all, you can rank as many or as few as you like. Now let's count everybody's votes. These represent everyone else's ballots with their preferences ranked. Under ranked choice voting rules, it's not enough to just get the most votes. You need a majority, more than 50%. Blue's ahead, but it only has seven votes, that's only 35%. 20 people voted, so 11 votes would be needed to win. First, we eliminate the color in last place. Sorry, orange fans, we're going to your second choice. This voting method allows people to vote their conscience without fear of wasting their vote on a candidate who isn't viable. No color has a majority yet. Bye-bye, pink. And we have a winner, the ranked choice voting way. But wait, Lansing's at-large elections allow for two candidates to win. How do we know who the second winner is? We have another instant runoff. The first winner is removed, and all the ballots are recounted just like before. Since we already know green won the first seat, we remove them and see who their voter's second vote is for. Lansing voters are currently allowed to pick two in this race. This was the method proposed by Lansing City Attorney's Office, which preserves that second vote without allowing it to dilute support from each voter's most preferred. Then we do another instant runoff, just like before. The color with the least votes is eliminated, and every vote continues to be counted for each voter's most preferred candidate in the race. And we have our second winner. Rank your vote, Lansing. So that's how we would determine our winner for mayor, city clerk. All of our award races, and that multi-winner race was explained at the very end there. The cities that currently use this are Cambridge, Massachusetts, they've been using it since the 1940s. Portland, Maine adopted it in 2010, and the rest of the state followed suit in 2016, they adapted it statewide. St. Paul, Minneapolis, Santa Fe, Las Cruces, San Francisco, all big cities that have been using this for a long time. New York City passed ranked choice voting in 2019, because it would save voters there $10 million per election. And there's a couple of other cities that were mentioned, at the Ansel Lake City, Utah, as well as 12 other cities in Utah adopted this. And most recently, Austin, Texas, adopted this, I believe it was yesterday or the day before. In Michigan, we have a shorter history, Ann Arbor used it in one election in 1974. Ferndale adopted ranked choice voting in 2004, and the City of East Point implemented it in 2019. As far as Lansing's ranked choice voting proposal, as I mentioned before, it would be used for the offices of mayor, city clerk, and city council members only. The first race that it could possibly be used would be in 2022. I'm sorry, 2023, for local races. I'm not sure whether it's 2022. The benefits of ranked choice voting are that we would get rid of that low turnout August primary. In addition to, financial savings is secondary to city and candidates, we can get to that later too, if anybody wants to talk about that next. Most importantly, voters will have more choices in the big election in November. And voters are empowered to express their preferences, because their preferences actually matter in ranked choice voting. Whereas our current system disregards them. And voters no longer need to develop the type of gaming strategy currently in our at-large races. 20% of voters only vote for one, where it's pick two. So that fixes that problem, and also eliminates the sometimes confusion problem of you can vote for one in this race, and two in this race, but one in this race as well. The ballot for, and the ballot and the instructions for all of the races would be the same for the voters, just rank the candidates in order of your preference. And another important benefit is that it leads to friendlier campaigns. So currently, if you're a candidate and you see, or a volunteer for a candidate, and you see an opponent's side in the yard, you're told to just basically skip that house. Whereas ranked choice voting encourages you to have that dialogue, go up and say, hey, I understand that you really like this candidate. This is, these are the issues that my candidate agrees with your candidate on, and please make him your second choice, or her your second choice. And that completely changes the tone and tenor around campaigns, and I think it would be a great positive for Lansing. All right, so the steps to bring it to Lansing. So the council has requested the attorney to draft a resolution. That happened last year, or the year before, maybe even. Resolution was introduced by a council member to council, that was, thank you, Councilmember Jackson. I skipped a step, though, there was, oh, okay, sorry, I didn't skip, skip. Council president referred the resolution to committee. That happened last month. And the committee referred or discharged that resolution to Committee of the Whole, which is meeting today, we're talking about that today. And hopefully, today, the council will approve that resolution. And if so, this resolution would go to the Attorney General's office and the governor, and they would have to approve the language. And if they approve the language, then it would be on the ballot for voters this November. And if a majority of Lansing decides that they want this system, they prefer this system over our current system, then we would adopt ranked choice voting, and we would use it as soon as our city clerk and city attorney say that we are able to. Two of the biggest questions that we hear is, will Lansing need to buy new voting equipment? And the answer to that question is no. And the second big question we hear is, do we need to rank every candidate in every race? And the answer to that is, no, you can rank as many or as few candidates as you like. And that's it, we'll take any questions.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to stop the share here. Excuse me. So, Councilmember Betts, I know you had a question, it was answered, at least they provided an answer, does that answer your question?
Actually, I think the question I'm going to ask is for legal, based on the specific writing. Now that I know what they want, I think that what we have written in the language is off. So I just want to have a discussion with the city attorney when it comes, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you, I had a question from a constituent that I figured I'd bring here. And it was about the last person, the person who gets the least amount of first-place votes. Them removing that option, and then going to the second. What if, in the other votes, that person is the majority of the second-place votes? Like, we're eliminating this person at the bottom, like, they were questioning whether or not we tally the votes by a value of a number. Like, so, what they had suggested is you have your first-place voter gets five points, your second-place voter gets four points, et cetera. And that would have a different outcome, and we ran a couple scenarios, that would have a different outcome from this. So, and the person who had the least first ones could theoretically have the most second-place ones, but they would be eliminated from consideration by virtue of having the least first.
Correct. So there are multiple forms of voting. Arrow's theorem says that no voting system is perfect. We're trying to pick the best one that we can get with the least amount of negatives. That voting system that you just described is called score voting, and it's a thing, it exists already. It's not used by any cities or states, it's never been used in any public elections, so its constitutionality is at question. Whereas ranked choice voting, this has been challenged in court and upheld in court multiple times. At the local, not our local, but other local, our state level though, and our, at the federal level. And this is also by far the most common alternative voting system to plurality, and so that's what we're pushing for. And the reason why, the reason why this voting method doesn't care about a second preference or a third preference, as long as the first preference is still in the race, is a theory called later no harm. So it basically says that by ranking more candidates, you'll never hurt your first candidate's chances. And that's the idea that that's trying to preserve. It's a one-person, one-vote thing, so you're not really splitting up a vote where like score voting kind of does. It, so I hope that answers the question.
I, it answers the question as to the difference. And I had never, I had never heard that score voting wasn't used in other runoffs. I just, I know when they ran the scenario for me, it had a different outcome, depending on if, like, somebody was the lowest first choice, but was the highest second choice. But you'd never really get to look at those second choices of a majority candidate, those don't come into play. So.
That's true, and I don't have any problem against score voting, I think it's a lot better than our current system. But the reason we didn't put score voting in our proposal is because it hasn't been proven to be legal yet.
Okay. Jim, what would it take to prove it to be legal? Would it just take a community adopting it and then being challenged on it and going to court?
Well, we haven't been asked, I'm sorry, we haven't been asked the question about score voting, at least the city attorney hasn't, that I know of. We'd have to look at what's involved there, and sort of match it up against the Constitution and the Charter and everything. And then we just, like anything else, we take a legal opinion, and it's got to be supported by case law, and then you just have to run with it and hope.
Right, it sounds as if, though, what Hugh is saying is there might not be case law, because it hasn't been tried.
Well, so we'd have to implement it and then get sued, and then see if it stands out.
It's not, I mean, we do think about this, no, we will have to check the Constitution, there are other statutes out there. We'll just have to analyze every aspect of this. It doesn't, you don't need cases all the time, you can actually look at precedent and other matters that are similar. So that's the analysis we would perform.
Okay. Is it, are we on a deadline to pass this, to get this onto the ballot in November?
Yeah, it's not today. Yeah, it's not today, but because it has to go through the attorney general's office, we do have some time that would have to be considered.
We have to meet with the attorney general, and I think we have the 100-word limitation. We've done this in the past and with the COVID and the restrictions now. I don't know what the timing is, but we'd have to set up a meeting with the gentleman's name is George, over at the attorney general, that they have to approve it for the governor to approve it.
So could somebody tell me what the drop dead date is for us in order to make that happen?
Well, it's Chris to get on November. What's your deadline? Chris Wolf, he's not.
For the November ballot, the deadline is August 9. And for the August ballot, it's May 10.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were definitely missing the August ballot for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is geared to go in the November. Okay, any questions on ranked choice voting more? I'm gonna move us on Kathy.
Councilmember Jackson's hand is raised.
Okay, we can come back Kathy if you want to come back to it, but it sounds like we don't have an idea yet. I'll text the clerk. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation, gentlemen. The question is, why is 54A district court judges not on there as a citywide election?
Did you, did you make that decision or was that something that someone else made?
I did not make that decision. I think Mr. Smurka's office decided which ones to put in the resolution.
Councilmember Jackson, did you sign off on it? Did they have that conversation?
I never had that conversation.
Okay. Mr. Smurka, do you have an idea?
We haven't had that, that I know of, that conversation. Lisa, have you had a conversation on this at all? Is this covered by state law?
I, we haven't had, we were never asked the question about the judicial election specifically. It was my understanding that we were contemplating the clerk, the mayor, and city council. I can look into the question, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get that question at all.
I think there's a lot less case law on the judicial races. I'm not aware of it being used in as many judicial races. I feel safer that it, that it's not getting sued if we stick with what we currently have. And if we want to add more races later, then we can do that. Just my suggestion.
We can, we can look into that issue. I just don't know how it's going to match up with the timing.
Okay. Is that, we'll look into it. We don't have to move this tonight either, folks. That's the thing is we can hold this on the, in the committee. It sounds like we have some, I know Councilmember Betts, Betts has handed up. Councilmember Jackson, it sounds like you have some questions. Where'd my camera go? Councilmember Betts, it sounds like Councilmember Dunbar has some questions. Councilmember Jackson has some questions. So we may, we don't need to kick this out of the committee tonight. Councilmember Betts.
I guess if we're not moving this, I can shoot an email over to the city attorney's office about the things that I see that would need to change here.
It sounds like there's a number of questions, too. So I would strongly advise against moving this from the committee tonight, just for that purpose.
President, can I get a list? So far, I have score ranking and.
Why the judges aren't in there?
Yeah. Okay, so, Mr. Smurka, thank you for being here. The first thing that I, so there's two things. The first that I noted before before the presentation was about at-large members. The reason why this is coming up is on page two, lines nine through 12, read to me like this. It says, if less than three candidates, no, I'm sorry, lines 12 through 15. So it says, if more than one person is to be elected to any office, at-large candidates, let's say, then the persons equal in the number of the number to be elected to that office, which would be two, receiving the highest number of votes for that office shall be deemed to have been duly elected to that office. So as I'm reading it, it's saying we have five people run, two get the highest number, then they're deemed to have been duly elected to the office. However, there's this, the line 17, 17 through 19 might be amending this, but it's not really clear, and I want to make sure that we get that right. The second thing is on, and that's referring again to the whole idea of the two candidates having the majority or winning in the ranked choice way of getting rid of the first choice and recounting. On the second one is, I think at the end of line nine, again on page two, I think we need to include the same language deemed to have been duly elected to that office because that's not really clear. But again, that might be a legal thing. So I'll, those are the two things that I've noticed in this. Thank you, President Spatafor, for letting me talk through those.
Of course. We did lose Councilmember Dunbar, too, but I, she said she lost power, so she'll be back eventually. But her question was related to score voting, so.
Score voting, right. So I have four questions that we will look at.
Oh, we got a few more hands yet, though. So we have four right now. So Councilmember Spitzley and then Council Vice President Hussein.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I need to be clear because the, I get that there's a score, score, choice voting, and then we've got ranked choice voting here. So as we're going through this, you know, and by the way, thank you, Jim, and thank you, Hugh, for the presentation. So I understand Councilmember Dunbar's question, but isn't that two different options? I mean, I don't think it's a question. It's an option of whether or not we want to do one option or the other option. So I think we need to be careful if we're gonna be, you know, because that's two different tracks I think we need to be on instead of having that try to be merged into this discussion of ranked choice voting.
Councilmember Spitzley, I 100% agree. I think Mr. Smurka is just going to get an answer for Councilmember Dunbar. I don't think we're gonna be mending this.
Thank you.
I'm not intending to merge anything, Councilwoman.
I thank you, Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Hussein, and then Councilmember Betts.
Yeah, just very quickly, I was actually going to ask a question pertaining to lines 12 through 19 because that was confusing to me as well. So I appreciate Councilman Betts addressing that issue. But I do want to, I want to take the opportunity to thank Jim, as well as Hugh and other folks like Max Donovan, who have worked incredibly hard, I think, really the better part of the last few years, you know, trying to advocate for this and get this out in front of voters. One of the things I was concerned about when we first took a look at this in city operations, you know, was whether or not we were providing opportunities for people at every single turn to learn more about this. Because when we talk about some of the disadvantages to, you know, to ranked choice voting, it is that voter confusion and frustration, I think that Loretta referenced earlier. And so I certainly appreciate those guys being willing to come back tonight. And then the substantial amount of work, should we choose this option? And remember, we're not choosing this option. We're choosing whether or not we're going to put this before the voters. If we choose to put something before the voters, certainly appreciate in advance the work that those guys are going to do. Arguments for, you know, typically majority support efficiencies, cost savings, voter choice, those types of things. One of the disadvantages, though, and I was hoping that maybe Hugh or Jim could speak to this one, is really crowded candidate fields. And I think, you know, when Loretta talked earlier, I think this is what she was referencing. One of the things we know is that, you know, through our process that we do in the city of Lansing, as an example, this year, we have eight at-large council candidates. And it is very difficult, whether that be through a candidate forum, whether that be through investigative journalism, it's very difficult to really learn much about those candidates. We certainly can get a feel for those candidates. We can certainly vote our conscience. But really, we're able to drill down on specifics and really get into candidates' past and things like that, once we whittle that down or pare that down. And so I guess I'm curious as to what other communities do to ensure that there's the same type of vetting of those candidates through this process as what we see through the typical runoff process. Because that is, I've done a lot of research on this, and that's probably one of the top concerns that I've been able to, I don't know, just ascertain that that's out there essentially. So I was hoping one of, one of you guys could talk to that.
So I'll address the more candidates. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll address the more candidates thing. I've heard that complaint before. I personally don't have a problem with more candidates. I think what that more candidates means is more choices for voters. And ranked choice voting allows them to be able to express that preference. Now, you mentioned the kind of voter education, not being able to get to know as many candidates. And I can understand that. I think the internet kind of makes that easier. You can, like, I've already sent everybody a front request. It's running for office, and it wouldn't be harder for me to send 10 more requests. But our current system disincentivizes people to learn anything about the other candidates. As soon as they know who their favorite candidate is, they only get one vote and there's, you know, so why, why research anybody else? Whereas ranked choice voting, you, that incentivizes voters to go out and learn about the other candidates because you might have a first, a favorite, or think that's your favorite, but when you learn about the other candidates for a second or third choice, you might decide that maybe you like that candidate actually a little bit more. And ranked choice voting allows you to actually say, tell everybody else that you like that candidate more, and it, we don't have to worry about it splitting the vote and helping to elect somebody that you like the least. So.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess the only thing I would add to that, as somebody that has actually went through the process, I guess what I meant was, if, trust me, I am all about, you know, more people becoming civically engaged. I mean, I teach civic engagement for a living as a social studies teacher. And so I'm not necessarily adverse to this. I'm just trying to address one of the issues I've heard. I looked at it through kind of the lens of me as a candidate back in 2015. I did, you know, engage in a primary. And as part of those forums where we had very crowded fields, you know, I was asked to respond in one to two minutes with regards to candidate questionnaires. I was asked to keep it to 50 words. To be honest with you, for me, it was, not that I did, but it would have been easy to fake it almost through that process. Once I made it through that primary, that is when things really got serious. Because we were able to, again, you pared it down to people's favorites. And then, you know, you got three to five minutes to respond, and you got, you know, 100 to 200 words to answer. And, you know, you're, hope people are able to engage you at a heightened level because, again, the field isn't so crowded. So that, that's just a concern that I'm hearing you. And, and, you know, it was interesting to me because I kind of viewed it from, okay, how, you know, how did it feel as I went through the process as a, as an elected candidate? So I think, I think the concern has, has merit. But again, you have to, I think you have to, in this case, weigh kind of, you know, cost benefit. And in this case, I'd be inclined to support putting this before the voters, but obviously, we're not there at this point. So, but again, I appreciate you guys and all of your, your work to educate the public.
Yep.
Looks like Councilmember Dunbar's rejoined us. I'm gonna move her over. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Are there other questions before we move on? As I said, we will not be voting, well, it sounds like we will not be voting on this tonight, so we're gonna take, take a beat. And Jim's gonna research some of those questions for us, and I encourage you all to reach out to your constituencies to see if there's any further feedback. Okay, thank you to Jim Delain and to Hugh McNichol for their work. I have learned more about this from Hugh than I learned a lot about many things from other people. So thanks to you for your consistent advocacy and information campaign on this.
Can I get Councilmember Hussein to withdraw his motion because we did.
Oh, yeah, Councilmember Hussein, would you please withdraw your motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. It's been withdrawn. Thank you, Sherry.
Yeah.
Moving on to the next thing we're gonna ask the voters about is the ballot proposal for the essential services millage restoration. This is a headly override. Mr. Vice President, actually, there is a substitute that was emailed to you all dated 4/30/2021. It's the final 4/30/2021 version. I can put it up on the screen if you need to see it, but it was emailed to you. Let me double check when, well, obviously, on the 30th of April when Lisa sent that out.
It should be in the packet.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Mr. President, maybe I can address what the substitute is if you don't mind.
Okay, well, it's not in my packet, but okay. Go ahead, Jim.
We had to wait. So our deadline for getting it on the ballot for primaries next Monday, I believe. So we were waiting on the number, the headly over, the headly number from the county equalization department as to how much we were going to be rolled back this year. And so we left blanks in the original resolution. That number is in there now. It's 18.8658 mil. That's the rollback number this year. We have to wait April, April, May is when they usually come, come back. And this year, it's been delayed a little bit. In the proposal, the amount that will be raised by by overriding the rollback is also listed there. It's 2.77 million, 2.78 million. So those are the only two changes in the substitute resolution. And in the original resolution, we left blanks and we left footnotes at the bottom explaining why the blanks are there.
And I would just like to withdraw my complaint. Sherry had the packet completely updated. I just forgot I loaded it this morning on my iPad and had not pushed refresh. So that is a user error, not a Sherry error. So just want to be clear. Thank you, Jim, for that update. Is there anything to discuss? Mr. Vice President, did you, you made the motion?
I sure did.
Okay. Any further discussion on Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, President Spatafor. In light of events over the last year and everything like that, I thought that it would be appropriate to offer an amendment to the essential services millage for this year. Specifically, this is included in your packet under brief. I don't, I'm not sure if that was supposed to be included there or not. However, it changes the allocation of the three mills that we will be drawing with this millage. The way that I've changed this is from, I guess it'd be one and a half mills for police and a one and a half mills for fire. I'd like to do one half mill for police and two mills for fire. And then the additional half of a mill I'd like to add for road and sidewalk maintenance. Basically, what this would do is it would reduce the police mill or the police portion of the millage to down one mil, increase fire protection millage by 0.5 mils, and also increase the road and sidewalk maintenance by 0.5 mils.
You would like.
I moved the amendment, I guess.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, just so we have all the information when we, when we vote on this, Councilmember Betts, can you tell us a little bit about how you came to these numbers, what that actually is in terms of dollars, first year of collection, and what that actually does to the police budget? So when we actually look at the police budget, I would assume that you reached out to them to talk about, you know, where they would find these savings and where they would cut. So any information you can provide, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Adam, for that question. I would refer to budget for, for this kind of conversation. They've got the exact numbers for us. Is anybody from finance here?
We do have finance here. Jake is here, budget director.
All right, Jake, can you answer those questions for Vice President Hussein?
They're moving from panelists to attending here, vice versa.
There he is.
Mr. Bauer, thank you for joining us. Mr. Riddigan.
I've returned. Can you refer to the question? I don't think I got it fully.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, so if we're gonna go down from 1.5 to 0.5 in terms of police, what is, what is the dollar amount, at least first year of capture, obviously in the fluxway, but, and then I'm assuming somebody, you know, had some conversations, I don't know if that's Councilmember Betts or yourself, with police to determine what that would mean for, for their budget, what that would mean for cuts. Back in 2011, as an example, when we first put this before the voters, we knew exactly. You know, should that not be approved, exactly how many positions would be cut, exactly where they would find those savings, et cetera. So I guess I'm, I'm hoping that these conversations have had, have been had, and I hope we have the, the numbers before we're asked to vote on this tonight.
Yeah, so cutting back, the police millage from 1.5 to 0.5 would be approximately a $1.2 million cut in the general fund. I'm seeing that 0.5 of that village, so about $600,000 would then be reallocated towards the fire department budget, and then another $600,000 would be reallocated into roads. And so that would be the portion that would be leaving the general fund on an annual basis. That'd be $600,000 you'd have to find in next year's budget. That'd be six hundred thousand, you'd have to find in next year's budget. And six hundred thousand for the next five years, or six, six, yeah, six hundred thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Brower. I see hands up from Council, Mr. Vice President, or is that, please get to the point here.
I'm, I'm good for now. I'd love to hear the other questions that folks have.
Sure, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I know on Public Safety Committee with Councilmember Garza and Councilmember Jackson, when we had Chief Green in, and we talked about the potential of the millage not passing, which would be no dollars. He indicated that that would mean approximately forty-three police officers would be laid off. So I think if you, you know, figure the numbers there, what, what that could equate to. So I just wanted, since that was part of your question, bring that up.
Council, thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Dunbar, Spitsley, and Betts?
Thank you. I'm just doing the math here based on what it claimed would be raised in the first year, which is two million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars divided by four mills. That means every mill is six hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. So by my math, moving from police at one point five to point five reduces six hundred and ninety-two thousand. Moving fire from one point five to two increases the fire budget by about three hundred and forty thousand. And then also increasing the roads to one point five increases the road funding by three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So it is a, it's a priority issue. It's a matter of priorities. It's, you know, do we, do we want to see more money going into fire? And potentially, which is where I would like to see the social workers and other non-police response to calls for service come from. And we know that we've heard from the public, they've been demanding more money go into roads. So it really comes down to whether or not folks are willing to make those adjustments based on these priorities, as opposed to the ones that are outlined in the current millage. And I, for one, have, have no problem with this proposal, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. And next up is Councilmember Betts, followed by Councilmember Hussein.
Thank, thank you, President Spatafor. Sorry, I thought you said that Councilperson Spitsley was gonna speak, so. I, I just wanted to say.
Councilmember Spitsley, did you, your hands, okay.
I, I, I wanted to.
I will, but not right now.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
I, I just wanted to know, you know, part of this, I, there, there are the, the concerns about staffing with the police department. My concern here is that this has to pass with fifty, fifty point one percent of the vote. And I know that there's a large contingency of Lansing, who are opposed to increases in police funding in the budget. And I think that fire, I would not want to lose the fire and roads part of this because we decided to put too much money into the police budget with this vote. So my thought is that to make this more politically feasible, and also to get the most votes that we can for this very, very important millage, the best way to do that would be to reduce the amount of mills that we're assigning to the police department. Also, I'd like to note that the original statement here only says that there's three mills for police and fire protection. There's no language in there about the particular funding, the particular use of those mills. And I wanted to make that, I wanted to clarify that in this resolution, so thank you.
Councilmember Betts, Councilmember Hussein, followed by Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, just very quickly, I guess this is a question for Robert or Jake. So the two point seven million dollars that Kathy referred to, is that the difference between the heavily capped and the nineteen point four four millage rate that we have now? Or is that the four mills, the one point five for police, one point five for fire, and one, and one for infrastructure?
Yeah, so the two point seven million dollars number, that's the difference between what our operating millage would be reduced down to, so about eighteen point eight mills, and the twenty mills that would be refreshed, according to the millage. And so we would only be levying about nineteen point four four mills. So that would otherwise be about a one point three million dollar hit to our upcoming budget. I did do some back in the napkin math, which I think was wrong in my previous statement. So about this year, one mill amounts to two point two million dollars, going up to two point three five million next year. And so half of that amount would be more in the range of one point three million being taken out of the general fund and moved into roads. But you'll note that for our FY twenty-two proposal, we are adding, I believe, seven hundred and fifty thousand for our general fund at the moment.
Thank you, thank you, Jake. Senator, you good, Mr. Vice President?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, Spitsley, Dunbar. And then we'll probably call for a vote on the amendment, because I think we're all kind of circling around our points here. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess this is more of a comment, and it's just a concern. I'm, I'm, I like the idea of, you know, being able to control the allocation of the mills. And it looks like, I guess I didn't realize that that's what council, that we could do that. But the concern is, is that this late into the budget process, I feel like the departments, including the administration, and even our amendments potentially are all kind of lined up on the idea that this will pass again. And I like the people choosing. It's just that I feel like if we, the concern is, is that if we changed it, if we, if the amendment went through and we changed it, that's like such a big hole and gain for fire department, but hole for police department, who's counting on these funds to be passed by the people. I don't, I don't know, it just seems like at this time, is, I wish this would have came earlier, but at this time, I don't know if, how the department would recover as far as their loss. So that's just my concern for the amendment at this time. But not to say that, you know, there's nothing to be done for our priorities and our amendments for the budget. But as far as amending the mills now, it would then change everything else that's been worked on, and that's just my concern.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Appreciate that. Councilmember Dunbar and Councilmember, I did say at the end of Dunbar, but well, I would go because Trish is busy dropped her finger, her hand down, so. Councilmember Dunbar, you're up.
I wanted to follow up on that question, whether or not this millage was accounted for in the current budget, and it appears that it is. And again, it's, it's a matter of priorities, because we are going to approve the budget. Whether or not this millage passes. If the millage doesn't pass, then we are going to have to go back. And there will have to be a budget amendment made by the administration to account for the loss of all of these dollars. And we, we still have the ability, in the process of approving the budget, to make our own value statements made clear with regard to appropriations. Now, I am, as far as this amendment goes, I would be comfortable if folks are worried that six hundred and ninety-two thousand is too much of a hit for the police department to take in one year. I would, you know, I would entertain flipping the numbers as they're proposed and saying one point five goes to fire, one point five goes to roads, and one goes to police. So that, that is another, I realize we're gonna have to vote on this one first, but if this one fails, I would, I would offer up that alternative as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Wood?
I just wanted to indicate the last time this vote was before the public. Sixty-eight point nine four percent supported this millage, and thirty-one point oh six did not support this millage.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Madam Clerk, on the best amendment to the resolution, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsley?
No.
Councilmember Wood?
No.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Garza?
No.
Councilmember Hussein?
No.
Councilmember Spatafor?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Are you prepared to offer an amendment?
Yep.
Plainly for the committee?
I will state it plainly. It is just reversing the current allocation for police and roads. So it would be one mill for police and one point five for roads. One point five for fire would stay the same. And I will point out, I, I understand that this passed by a good majority four years ago. That was long before, long before the social movement that we've had right now with regard to police in the last eighteen months in particular. And I also worry that, that that will affect passage of this village in its current state. So I will make again my proposal that we move one mill on police and one point five on roads.
Thank you, and for those of you paying attention, typically I'm a stickler for things must be in writing, but those are on ordinances, resolutions, we typically do, do by voice vote in committee. So I just want to clarify the consistency error that you may be noting, but it is on ordinances, the charter requires it be in writing. So that's the, the difference there. So on the Dunbar amendment, Miss Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Dunbar?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitsley?
No.
Councilmember Wood?
No.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
No.
Councilmember Hussein?
No.
Councilmember Spatafor?
No.
Motion fails by three.
Thank you. The motion has failed. The motion before us is the resolution that is in your packet. Remember, if you push refresh, it's in your packet. So is there a further discussion on the resolution? Councilmember Spitsley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as I'm reading the resolution, you know, it says three mills, it, it basically just says three mills go to the continuation of essential services that include police protection, fire protection. So the three mills then are split, are allocated between police and fire per the administration priorities. Is that how that works?
So let me just, I, I think I can clarify some things. So headly works, I'm, I know many of you know this, but let me just, headly works that it rolls back our millage rate every so often. We are by charter authorized up to twenty mills that we can levy as a city council. We have to get a voter approval from the voters to go back up to that twenty cap because of the headly cap has rolled us down to eighteen point eight six six, eighteen point six five, excuse me. So we have now before us a headly override to get us back to that twenty. The resolution is a statement of intent. The actual ballot language before the voters is a inclusive of funding essential services, police protection, fire protection, local road and sidewalk ma- maintenance, major maintenance, excuse me. So the, the millage intention there is sort of spelled out as a, as a statement, a value statement in the resolution, but not going on the ballot to the voters. I did a little history digging on this. In two thousand and eleven, it was presented to the voters with one point five, one point five, and one. Yes, and then in two thousand and sixteen, the language before you was what was presented to the voters, according to the city attorney. So that is, that's kind of what you're seeing in front of you. But we're continuing in this, the value statement, that resolution. And I, the reason I'm not, or the, the reason we're doing that is, that's what we've done in the past. So that's what was presented to us through the administration, referred to us by law, all that kind of stuff. So does that help, Councilmember Spitsley?
It does. I'm just trying to get a handle on the funding and the flexibility. I mean, if we're, if we are talking about, as the previous amendments to the resolutions of reducing the allocation of mills to the different departments, I just wanted to know, you know, how, you know, how it all works. How, there, it just seems to be, it was all put in together, three mills allocated to police and fire. I was just concerned about what does that mean in, in, in the past, how has that been allocated? But I'm good, I mean.
Yeah, and that's all, I mean, through the budgeting process, as we spell it out, we can, so. Councilmember Wood?
So there is an opportunity, well, let me finish. So there is an opportunity still in the budget process as we go through the final budgeting and going through the amendments to put forth amendments to the budget that would address some of these same concerns. Is that correct?
Yes, you have on the tenth an opportunity, and then on the seventeenth, the final budget adoption.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, I appreciate it. I'm just trying to be clear, and I want, want to try to be clear for, you know, people who are watching, thanks.
Sure thing. Councilmember Wood, then Councilmember Dunbar?
My question would be to Jim, since the original resolution, putting this forward, talked about the one point five, one point five, and one. And these are both the two thousand and sixteen, and this one is a renewal of those, of the original one. Isn't that what's binding us where we are right now?
No, what's, what's, what you have here is it's, is, is a headly override. It's a restoration of the mark of the cap of twenty mills.
I, I get that, Jim.
And, and the wherewithal is the clauses are a statement of intent of the council. And so I don't see a binding, you're, you're, you're not telling the voters anything other than what's in the proposal language. I mean, I don't know if that's answering your question. Maybe I didn't understand the question.
Well, the first time this failed was because the people did not believe it was going to go where we had said it was going to go. And so people voted it down. And then we had put in the resolution exactly where the dollars were going to go.
Right.
Which was what was approved. And the renewal of this said the exact same thing. If we, if we went out right now and got the information that was passed out to neighbors and the talking points and everything else, it said the exact same thing. The one point five, one point five, and one. We have put together a budget based on those same things. So, like, you know, I'm just, I, if we're talking about failure, I think there's the potential of that if people think that the money isn't gonna go where people thought the money's gonna go.
That's an issue. That's an issue. It's more of a political issue. You can't put it in the proposal, because otherwise it would be an unlawful millage.
I understand you can't put it in the proposal, but can it go in the resolution?
Well, you have it in the resolution about what the intent of the council is. Council, you know, and then again, you can't bind future councils.
And the reason, the reason it's an unlawful millage is we are not a city that's authorized to levy police and fire.
Right, I, I get that.
I know that, but probably others may not listen.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. I was just gonna ask if Jake or Robert could answer the question? Thank you. I was just gonna ask if Jake or Robert could answer the question as to whether or not the current budget, when it was determined for police and fire, used the 1.5 or some other combination of that amidst the three mills. Because I I get what we're doing here. We're not asking to pass four mills because our rollback didn't go back four mills. It only went back a smaller amount. But the intent at the time that we increased this, when we did the first millage, was to add four mills back. It just doesn't roll back in the same degree when it rolls back. So I'm curious as to this year and past years from that millage money that was collected, was it allocated in the proportion of 1.5 mil, whatever that value was, went to police, or was it done in some other fashion?
Yeah, so in FY '22 budget proposal, if you open up your budget book to the printed page 11, it shows a breakdown of the property tax. So about 34.3 million is undedicated, 3.5 million is dedicated to police, 3.5 to fire, 2.3 for roads, 2.3 for parks. Now, the roads and parks villages largely leave the general fund. The police and fire are sort of absorbed into those departments, preventing us from having to lay off that number of staff. So like, when we were talking about 3.5 million to the police budget where their operations are moving to the next page. Sorry, my dog is not helping here. 26 million, 19 million dollars for fire. So those are a fraction, and they really cover like the year-to-year increase in the annual pension contribution, which this year is 3.5 million between those two departments.
So are you saying that the money that we raise from this millage really goes into pension?
It goes into all of the police department as a whole, not any one particular service. Or not like the roads or the parks village that goes almost entirely to capital projects.
And what about the public service portion of this millage?
Roads, it goes towards building roads in our major local streets funds. So those two leave our general fund. If this militare to be moved out of the fund, we'd have to find that those dollars elsewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, President Spatafor. Now that we're discussing that these mills aren't actually required to go where we say that they're going, are we misleading the public by even making a statement like 0.5 mills for police protection, two mills or three mills to police and fire, and one mill to essential server sidewalk and road repair? I feel like in some ways we're lying to the public by saying that because it's not binding the council. I remember last year, there were people coming from the public saying, oh, well, this proportion of the police budget is defined by this millage. So should we, I guess this is a question for legal, is are there any legal problems with having this language if we are in fact misleading the public? And then if so, should we just remove this language altogether?
May I respond?
Yes, you may.
No, I don't. I don't see where there's any misleading of the public here. It talks about police protection, which includes everything that's in a police budget, fire budget, essential services. It's a statement of intent of the city council at this point.
Well, and I have a many of these questions, I'm sorry, Councilmember Betts, when you're finished. To that, I have a question for the Budget Department. It sounds to me, I don't have budget book in front of me, but on page 11, where you break out the property tax allocations, it sounds to me is that while though not binding, we treat it as such in our allocations of those resources. Is that untrue or true?
Correct. So it's dedicated in your budget book. There's, it's in that page about 3.5 million covers about 50 police officers, based on my quick back of the napkin map.
Okay, that's that's the first part of that question answers. Your answer answers my question. And I saw Mr. Brewer also shaking his head. You've got quite a few years of experience at looking at this. Has that been the case?
That is correct.
Okay. Also, I mean, while we're on the subject, everyone, welcome, Mr. Brewer. Today's his first full day back at the city council full time. Um, okay, I I think we've exhausted discussion on this item. I would do one more round here. I see no hands. So I'll ask Sherry to please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution, putting forward the essential services millage.
Councilmember Wood? Did I?
I'm finding my mouse. Thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Spitsely?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries 8-0 on the belt language resolution that's in the packet originally submitted.
Very good. And then our final item tonight is continuing questions on the budget. I just want to make sure we have one more opportunity. I have a question for budget, but I don't need an answer today. I would just like you to stick this in your cap because someone brought it up tonight. There is an Act 345, Michigan Act 345, which allows for the levying of millages for police and fire pension. I'm wondering if we can look into that and just give us a, give us a primer on that. Doesn't have to be before the 17th, but I'm curious about that as we look at the ever-growing amount that OPEB and pension liabilities take up in our in our budget.
Yeah, there's a couple options, 345. I briefly just reached out to Jim and we'll we'll get together.
Okay.
And brief you on that.
Yeah, like I said, it doesn't have to be for before the budget's adopted because I did not anticipate putting another thing in front of the voters this November, but wanted to at least know what our options were there as we start looking long term. Other questions before we get back our 13 minutes? All right, folks, the committee will stand adjourned at 6:47. We'll see you back here for a city council at 7:00.